Are you guys good with?
Yeah.
We wouldn't do anything until motion on the consent agenda anyways to excuse whoever's not here.
Okay.
That gets them a few minutes.
It being 7:03, I will call the March 10 city council meeting to order. Do I bang the gavel? Would you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will now have our citizens' comments. And during the citizens' comments, each speaker may address the council for upwards of three minutes. And we do have Ann. And Ann, I'm not going to try to-
Don't even worry about it.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ann Savaatasi. That's why it's so difficult. Nobody gets it. It's fine. What I'm interested in is business item E. The adoption of a resolution approving the sole source contract with Social Mentum for the Mind Mixer platform. And when I started looking at Mind Mixer, basically what I see the city doing and paying for is hosting a social platform for people to log in, give ideas, other people to comment on. The ideas that get the most comments basically float to the top of the list. That is without any input really from council, the mayor, or any city organization. When I started looking, there's another company called MetroQuest. And one of the, a couple of the things that I found interesting in Mind Mixer, when you register to use Mind Mixer as a citizen, they're going to ask for quite a bit of personal information from you, which can stall some people out on signing up and wanting to participate into it. The other thing that I saw on there is that with the MetroQuest, the city is able to go in there and put in specific input as to what their thoughts are on upcoming projects, projects that people have in their minds. And then citizens can comment on that, which I think might give you a better view on the way that people would like to see things done around here. I think if you do it with the Mind Mixer, and even though I think public input is great, I think you might be getting a whole lot of ideas that are quite over the top and out there, and people commenting them and really not getting down to the nitty gritty of what you're trying to look at. And I just ask you maybe to look at this a little bit closer before you pass a resolution to do this. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address the council this evening?
Nick Whittleton. Regarding the KRCC ILA, last week, the city of Bremerton voted this measure down. The process has been going on for quite a while now. Now they are saying we have to approve it with an unknown level of funding. If this is a real organization with a real plan, they could provide a real dollar amount. These were some smart people, maybe too smart if they can get buy-in on a blank check. The voting in this organization is disproportionate as well. It was touted as non-political, yet all three county commissioners get a vote. Two of these commissioners have districts that overlap in Bremerton. So you can see that Bremerton, along with their own three votes, gets at least five votes if need be. And the same with the North End. And Port Orchard, we have one county commissioner and two votes. We can't hold our own. All we can do is agree. Back to the funding. We kick back a couple percent of awarded grant funding, which is to be paid when awarded, not received. So we paid from the general fund. Maybe it can be paid back, maybe not, as we have seen with other grant funding. I just don't think it's been thought through enough and vetted enough with the people thinking. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would care to address the council this evening? If not, there will be an opportunity again at the end of the meeting for citizen comments. Council, would you like to approve the agenda for this evening?
I'd like to make a motion to add new business, or excuse me, consent agenda item four G, excusing council members Clausen and Patonso.
Second?
There is a motion and a second to amend the consent agenda to excuse council members Clausen and Patonso. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, please say no.
Mr. Mayor, Madam Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and approve the agenda as amended.
Second?
There is a motion and a second to approve the agenda as amended. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The opposed say no. And we will move on to the consent agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No? And we have no presentations this evening. We do have a public hearing. And I believe that is Mr. Dorsey's item.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Ashby, council members. During the storm drainage utility rate public hearing process held in the fall of 2014, as the outcome of the 2014 storm drainage gap analysis, several ancillary storm drainage-related issues were heard. One issue involved the interpretation of 16.38 Port Orchard Municipal Code home-based business as it relates to 1306-060 of the municipal code definitions within the storm drainage utility. Upon review by both the public works and planning departments, it was determined that an amendment to 13060 POMC definitions within the storm drainage utility was needed to better clarify that a home-based business, commercial activity incidental to the residential use of the home does not constitute a commercial classification within the storm drainage utility. Staff recommends that the council conduct a public hearing and then authorize the mayor to execute ordinance 003-15, thereby amending 1306-060 POMC definitions within the storm drainage utility.
We will now open the public hearing regarding the ordinance amending POMC 13-06-060. The public hearing is open. No one signed up to speak to the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that wish to address us? Thank you.
My name's Luella Hellenstein. And regarding the reclassification of what is considered single-family residence for the purpose of storm drain sewer utility, this new classification will impact small investors in our community. Classifying a fourplex as a commercial property, while this affects just the city at this point, how long is it going to take for the county to pick up on this and charge these owners commercial rates for taxes? To top that off, as soon as the commercial shows up anywhere in the paperwork, these properties will no longer be considered eligible for financing under Fannie Mae, Freddie Mac, or other government programs, which will cost the owners dearly when purchasing or refinancing. It will limit loans to adjustable rate mortgages with balloon-type payments, shorter terms, et cetera, which will hurt our community in the long run. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would care to address the council? Mr. Whittleton?
I feel compelled to thank Mark for getting the wording changed around to where we feel a little more comfortable that home-based businesses can still thrive in the city. But it sounds like we need a little more wordsmithing on the rest of the ordinance. Thank you.
Again, the public hearing is open if anyone else would care to address the council. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing.
I move to authorize the mayor to execute ordinance number 003-15, thereby amending 13.06.060 Port Orchard Municipal Code definitions within the storm drainage utility.
Is there a second?
Are you allowed to second if you wanted to?
Yes, I can. So I would.
Now that we have it open for discussion, this, I think, addresses the issue that came up several months ago when we were talking about rates. This issue isn't the usage, whether it's one, three, or five. This is strictly separating home-based businesses from the commercial designation, which I think was a huge step forward in where we were. So this is what I was hoping we would have come back to us, and that's why I'm supportive of it.
Mark, would you like to say a few words about this to address the concerns that have risen?
Well, yeah. Remember when we set the utility up back in 2009 or '10? The split between residential and commercial was always from fourplex up, like other jurisdictions in the state. We've not changed that. We simply, in order to address the home-based business, so that just because you had a business license to sell artwork out of your home and you had a 4,500 square foot house, that you weren't going to suddenly be assessed as a commercial use just because you had a business license. And so in looking at the home-based business description, where the planning department basically determines if a use under a commercial, home-based business permit is still incidental to the residential neighbor of the house. You know, if you're just, you have to do artwork or photography and somebody comes up every other day and picks up a piece of artwork, you're not changing the residential nature of the house. Now, if you're cutting 10 heads of hair in a day, then the planning department would basically determine that that use under that home-based commercial business is not incidental to the residential use of the house. And so that would, that particular house would then be assessed commercially. And if it was 4,500 square feet, then it would be one, and it would go up to, you know, two ISUs instead of one. This simply changes the definition so that all we did is we, we hadn't defined single-family in the original ordinance. So all we did is we actually defined single-family, and then the multifamily commercial is anything other than single-family. And so we just created the definitions to align with the current municipal code 1638, so that if you do have a 5,000 square foot house and it's just a residential, you're going to get assessed as one ISU, even if you happen to sell artwork out of your house. So that's all this is doing. It has nothing to do with, you know, the decision we made, you know, five years ago as to where the break would be between, you know, single-family, duplex, triplex. Those are all, if you're a single-family, you're one ISU. If you're duplex, you're two. If you're triplex, you're three. And then from a fourplex up, you just don't get assigned arbitrarily. Our staff actually goes out and measures the amount of impervious surface. So that's all the separation between the residential and the commercial does, is it basically says from single-family to triplex, we're going to assume that you fall within that 3,000 square feet per ISU category. And we actually don't come out and audit until you get to a fourplex and up. And if you also remember, we had for a year, we established that if you had a problem with how you were being assessed, if you thought that you were commercial, and we assumed 85% that first year, you had a year to determine that you were maybe at 60%. And then we offered a credit for that. So, you know, as we've moved into, you know, past that initial setup of the utility, it's on the ground to do these assessments for the commercial and then the residential, all that's pretty much in the system. This is simply, again, not triggering a two ISU bill to somebody simply because they came in and got a home business license. And that's basically, that was the concern, is if somebody came in with a home business license, the utility billing would just go, oh, it's commercial, you're going to get assessed as commercial. And we said, no, that wasn't the intent. As long as it's under, it's consistent with 1638, is incidental, then it's still a residence.
I just wanted to confirm what I think I've already heard you say, but I just want to make sure I heard it right. Fourplexes, I always love the way you look. Fourplexes never were in this. They, they're not being excluded by this definition. They never were part of this definition.
Right. Fourplexes were always commercial. Because when you, basically traditional home construction, a single duplex or triplex usually get into some sort of a townhome. Once you get into a fourplex, you're getting more into now a, an apartment-type structure with parking and garages and things, so.
So what we're doing tonight isn't excluding them because they never were in-
They never were part of this.
Okay. That's all I-
Mr. Chang?
I appreciate the explanation from Mark because it makes me feel more comfortable that this is a more equitable ordinance. But for me, I'm still a little confused by some of the history that came about in the discussion of the ordinance. And maybe, you know, the committee members can help clarify. It seemed that one of the big issues was that an ordinance like this would change how we would bill bed and breakfasts of four units or more. So would they be affected, how would they be affected by this ordinance? Would they be charged any differently than if this ordinance were not passed?
So if you remember, when we had the utility, when we had the storm drainage gap analysis, that was simply based on the gap analysis to figure out where the gaps were in the utility. As part of those discussions, there were three, what I called ancillary items, that really had nothing to do with the gap analysis. It was just, for lack of a better term, you know, misunderstanding of what the utility rate conversation was. But we had the bed and breakfast issue, which was a separate issue. We had the home business issue. And then we have the last one, which we'll have resolved here in, at the next meeting next week, which was the storm drainage credit. So the bed and breakfast issue doesn't have anything to do with this conversation. If you're a bed and breakfast that's, like the three we have in town, two of them are basically, one's the size of a house, one's one and a half times a house, and they get billed commercially. All three of our bed and breakfasts get billed commercially. It just depends on how many square feet you have. Because once you're commercial, it's based on 3,000 square feet per ISU. So this, this deals directly with a home business of a residential use. Whereas to run a bed and breakfast, it's a commercial use. Because a bed and breakfast is not incidental to the, you know, use of a residence. Correct me?
The other thing that I would just point out, Mr. Chang, is in our 13.06, well, I don't know that that's the municipal code number. It's the municipal code that deals with home-based businesses. It specifically in there states that bed and breakfasts are not home-based businesses. I mean, it's a, it's a line item in that, in that document.
I just want to make sure that passage of this will not, this alone will not affect the rate change for a bed and breakfast, so four units or more. Okay.
In fact, didn't this come out of concern that the Whittletons expressed about their home-based business and square footage? Didn't, I mean, that came out of that discussion?
Right.
And this is to reassure people who have home-based businesses that they don't automatically fall under commercial designation. So that is actually to put some people's minds at rest.
Right. There were, the Whittletons, I believe a few other people came up, and they were concerned that the utility billing would just arbitrarily say, you've got a home-based business, it's commercial, you're going to be now assessed. And if you have a larger home, you could jump up from one to two. If, once you get, so it's 3,000 per, so 6,000 square feet, we round up over, you know, one and a half. So there theoretically could be larger homes that are, again, have a small photography studio in their home, that are suddenly going to be paying $28 rather than 14. So yes, it came, I think there were three different people that testified. And so this, I felt this was a fairly simple solution once we got with the planning department and actually looked at what the home-based business wording was and let them be the trigger as to whether or not the use applied for meets home-based business. So that's the first litmus test. If it, if it meets the definition of home-based business, then it'll be placed as a home-based business as a single-family residence, and utility billing will pass over. It won't be considered a commercial activity with drainage now that we've changed this wording.
Is there any more discussion, council? Then we will be voting on the motion to execute ordinance number 003-15, thereby amending 13.06.060 Port Orchard Municipal Code definitions within the storm drainage utility. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. That is passed. We will move on to business item A, which is confirming the mayoral appointment to the planning commission. And Brandy, I see that you are the lead on that.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and council. In late December of 2014, a planning commission position became vacant pursuant to RCW 3563 020. The members of the planning commission are appointed by the mayor and confirmed by the council. The mayor sought input from various members of the public and the community development director. Therefore, the mayor is recommending the appointment of Mr. Marcus Lane to the planning commission.
Counsel? I have a question. Is Mr. Lane in the audience?
He is, yeah.
Thank you.
I'll make the motion. I move to adopt a resolution confirming the mayor's appointment to the planning commission as set forth in the resolution.
For discussion, I'll move it along and say second.
Thank you.
I wonder if Mr. Lane would be willing to answer a few questions. Maybe come up to the microphone?
Thank you.
So why don't you tell us a little bit about yourself? And I know you have something here, but the rest of the audience doesn't have what we have.
Yes, sir.
And, you know, why you want to be on the planning commission and that sort of thing?
Well, I've recently returned to Port Orchard about two years ago. Served 20 years in the Air Force. And while returning home, I, one of the things that I've definitely discovered that I, that I wanted to portray was that as I tried my foray into the business arena, I began to realize that a public service, you know, was something I wanted to stay with. I'd been dealing with, or spending a good bit of time with Gil, and he became very much of a mentor for me. As many of you know, you know, these past two years, I've been spending a lot of time here at the city council, wanting to, you know, be involved. Because, you know, when I came home, I had a lot of time on my hands, and I wanted to be involved with my community. I wanted to be able to affect the change to, that's going to affect the community and my children's lifestyle and the place they're going to live for the next several years, decades, and even my grandchildren. So that is the, that is the reason why I kind of brought myself forward for that reason.
I have a couple of questions, because I read your resumes, and they were very complimentary. You've had a very successful Air Force career. Congratulations, and thank you for your service. You did mention in the application form that you've been active in political action groups and government and community events. Could you let us, could you just elaborate on that a little bit?
Well, the majority of that was over my, you know, my past 20 years. Here recently, within the past years, I've gotten involved with some, a lot of the local Kitsap group, the Republican Party as well. I did a little bit of support with them as well. I've been associating a lot with a lot of the people here in the local community, trying to be involved with, you know, the, the, kind of the unofficial association of people, you know, that have very political interests, you know, in the community and in the Kitsap region in general.
Thank you.
So another question, if the rest of the members don't mind me asking another question?
Okay.
Normally, we try anyway to get people who are, have a background in, like, building or architecture, design, things like that. Do you have such a background?
In architecture and design, no. I do have a very, a varied background. A good five years of my background, while I was in the military, I dealt with a lot of community planning, installation and strategic planning with the communities themselves, you know, when it came to base installations. So I've had quite a bit of, quite a bit of experience when it comes to, you know, the comprehensive plans, planning the communities. Addition to that, obviously, you know, with a good deal of my experience, I've been able to enjoy a lot of time as emergency manager, prior, things, and programs that, you know, help support not just the community, but also my, you know, organizations. You know, along with things like project management. My last two years, I also served as the chief of staff for my organization, in which we were responsible for several strategic programs, both tactical and strategic, that dealt with, you know, not, not just, you know, my organization, but all the organizations within our installation, as well as the infrastructure and all the response that had to do with that.
Thanks. I, my, my questions aren't going to be directly towards you, so don't be uneasy. But I'm more concerned, or I guess, more interested in the process. It says that the mayor sought input from various members of the public and the community development director. Do we know how many people were interested, if at all, beyond Mr. Marcus? I think it's Lane, yes?
I was only involved with the actual, with a meeting with the mayor and Mr. Lane to talk about just the different issues facing the city and see how, what Mr. Lane's thoughts were on his approach to being a planning commissioner. I think that the mayor had solicited applications for the planning commission, and this was, you know, one that he's had for a little while and was considering. And I don't know who else he talked to, though.
Oh, I was under the understanding when the council approved Mr. Whittleton, that was the last of those applications. And I thought at the time, we had a discussion that there would be a more wider net cast for the next time we needed to fill the position. At least that's what I took away from that last discussion.
I'm, I'm not 100% sure. I can't speak to the mayor.
We don't know if there was an ad in the paper or posting on the city website or anything like that.
So from the appointment of Mr. Whittleton, there was one remaining application. Shortly after the passing of Mr. Michael, Mr. Lane submitted his application. It's my understanding that the mayor did not seek additional applications, per se, through social media or the ad in the paper, that he directly talked to the community. And from that point, that's, that's when he made his recommendation.
Thank you.
A couple of comments to address what Councilman Cartwright said. I think that the process has evolved. I mean, I remember back when I was appointed to the planning commission, the first interview I had with the then-mayor, actually, I didn't get it. And I don't think I got the second chance either. However, people move, and I was finally appointed on the third, third. So at that time, it was more of who, staff, at that time, it was Larry Kearls, who they were familiar with, who they sort of had in the wings. So it wasn't a formal process, because I was going to ask Brandy also, like, was there an ad place? Was there a deadline? Was it open to the public? I don't want to say it's never been like that, but it wasn't like that when I was appointed in the late '90s. My concern actually, and I don't- My concern, actually, and I don't know if Mr. Lane or maybe Mr. Bond can tell me, I just want to verify the, the address on Mansfield, and I think that's a relatively newly-created street. Does that lie in the city limits? Okay, good. So you would be, you're a city resident?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's my main concern.
Are there any more questions? Thank you, Mr. Lane.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, and thank you for your service. Very impressive resume.
Is there any more discussion by counsel? Seeing none, we will be voting on the resolution to confirm the mayor's appointment to the planning commission as set forth in the resolution. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say no. Thank you, and congratulations, Mr. We will move on to business item B, approval of the inter-local agreement with Kitsap County for the Urban County Community Development Program Funds. And Ms. Reinerson, you're the lead on that also.
Mary McClure with Kitsap Regional Coordinating Council, executive director, gave a presentation at the February 25th, 2000, excuse me, the February 24th, 2015 council meeting and requested the council consider adopting the inter-local agreement at tonight's meeting. It has been provided for your consideration.
Counsel?
I move to approve an inter-local agreement authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Kitsap County for the Urban County Community Development Program Funds.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Here. Is there discussion?
I just want to make sure that this is not the, this is not the item that Mr. Whittleton was referring to. Was that 7D by any chance?
Yes.
Okay. So this is not that item that we have commented on.
I will make just a couple of comments on this particular, this particular inter-local agreement. This is for the audience's information as well as counsel's. This particular agreement is unchanged from what we have been working under for several years, other than the fact that this particular, what they call the Community Development Grant Program, will be moving from being housed at Kitsap Regional Coordinating Council to being housed at Kitsap County. There were some questions brought forth regarding item 2.7, regarding policies. By signing this, we agree to particular policies prohibiting the use of excessive force by law enforcement agencies within its jurisdiction against individuals engaged in nonviolent civil rights demonstration. And B, a policy of enforcing applicable state and local laws against physically barring entrance to or exit from a facility or location which is subject to such nonviolent civil rights demonstrations within jurisdictions. The city of Port Orchard does have such policies in place, and they are actively enforced by the police department. Those were the primary questions that I knew were coming forward from this, and I have been asked, because I do sit on the KRCC board, why those were in there, and I'm not sure, except that most of the grant, the Community Development Grant Programs are funded through HUD. So I am assuming that most of the verbiage in here is required by, by, by the HUD program. That would be my guess. There are no other changes to the document. It's the same document that we have been operating under since, I believe, about 1999
Would there be any objection to moving this to a work study so that we could talk about it further? Is there any kind of time constraint on this?
The executive director hasn't notified us of any time constraints, other than the one that has already passed. The next week's work study session is full. Right now, it's scheduled for just shortly under two hours. We can put it on there, and what you guys get to is what you guys get to, or I can schedule it for April's work study session.
The deadline that Ms. Reinerson referred to is the Community Development Lot Grant Program has a physical year that starts for their funding process in March 1st. And so that's kind of the issue, is to move this forward and not interrupt the funding cycle, was, would be the time element.
It's already started, you're saying? March 1st was.
I had a question. Is that the same grant where KRCC was short, we're going to have to, because of lack of permit fees, and we're going to have to pay a little bit more?
No, no, that's, no, that has nothing to do with this.
Okay.
Can you refresh my memory? So this is one of the items that Executive Director Mary McClure did speak about?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
This is, this is the particular grant program that the county and the, well, the county and the cities, Bainbridge Island, Pauls Bow, Bremerton and Port Orchard, all work collaboratively. And this particular grant program provides temporary housing for those in need.
Actually, this one seems like it excludes Bremerton, but it's.
Oh, is it? Okay, then it's the next one.
Yeah. I mean, they all kind of run together, but this one does, does not, I think Bremerton, we were saying, has their own HUD program or whatever the proper language is.
No, that is correct. That is correct.
They have their own.
They have their own, correct. And this is the one.
For the remaining cities.
Yes.
And the county.
Right. Because individually, we don't have the.
Need or?
The, the need or the volume to qualify for the grants, but collectively, we do.
If I may add into, I believe this is also relating to the contract where the staff of this grant program is going to be housed at the county, and the gentleman who was with Ms. McClure, Ms. McClure is the one that's going to be administering this contract.
That is correct.
Okay.
Now, this isn't the one that the county bid for. This is something different, right?
Oh, this is, this is simply housing.
Housing the HUD program.
Let me get your, yeah, let me go back just a little bit further.
You don't have to unless everybody wants you to. I've just had that little bit of a question.
Question, yeah.
Okay.
Just, I, I feel compelled to give the explanation. When the housing, the two housing elements have been housed at KRCC with the restructuring of the Kitsap Regional Coordinating Council, the decision was made that these programs would be more effectively and efficiently administered if they were housed at the county. And so that was the decision that was made. Both of these particular inter-local agreements have been ratified by the other jurisdictions.
The only question I have would be for the planning director, Mr. Bond. Are you familiar, and I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but it just occurred to me now, do we have much volume or need for these type of programs in our city? I guess I'm wondering, how or, how would we be able to benefit from them?
Honestly, these, these programs are entirely managed outside of our departments. I mean.
Okay.
This is not something that the city's in a position to provide any funding or resources towards, and so I guess this is agreement, this agreement is how this is provided countywide.
No, we haven't.
Yeah, we, we haven't done this historically, and until we're a much, much larger city, we wouldn't.
Well, I just wonder, I guess, that if we're applying for funds collectively with the other cities, do any of those funds actually end up in the city?
Yes, there, there's, there's geographic equity involved in the distribution of funds.
That's what I wanted to know, okay.
And we provide representatives to the committee that evaluates the applications that are submitted.
Okay.
Is there any more discussion?
So, Mayor, Mayor Potem Ashby, then, nothing else has actually been changed.
Nothing has been changed.
From the other agreement that we already have.
That is correct.
So this is a transfer of this agreement from the KRCC to the county.
That's correct.
With no changes.
This one and the next one.
This one and the next one. The both, the two housing agreements have no changes, other than where the administration is occurring, not in KRCC, but in, in effect with the county. Mr. Dorsey.
Yes, and I, and I remember in the presentation, I think Ms. McClure made a point, to point out that it's, it's really a small pot of money relative to, you know, KRCC transportation, and that it's always historically been a very small pot of money, and it will continue to be a very small pot of money. So it's, for Port Orchard, it's pretty much a non-issue historically.
If there's no more discussion, we will take the vote. And all those in favor of approving an inter-local agreement authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Kitsap County for allocation of, am I on the right page?
That's the wrong one.
Yeah, I, I realize that. To approve an inter-local agreement authorizing mayor to execute an agreement with Kitsap County for the Urban County Community Development Program Funds. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? With that, we will move on to the item 7C, which is the inter-local agreement with Kitsap County for the allocation of SHB 2060 surcharge funds to the very low-income housing projects. Brandy?
This agreement is one of two, or two of two, I should say, that was presented by Ms. McClure, and this is regarding the funds of the housing projects, and the contract has been provided for you.
I move to approve an inter-local agreement authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Kitsap County for allocation of SHB 2060 surcharge funds to very low-income housing projects.
Second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, we will vote on the motion to approve an inter-local agreement authorizing mayor to execute an agreement with Kitsap County for the allocation of SHB 2060 surcharge funds to the very low-income housing projects. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Say no. Now we will go on to business item D, which is the approval of an inter-local agreement with KRCC, with the Kitsap Regional Coordinating Council for developing countywide planning policies under the Growth Management Act. Brandy?
So this is the third contract that was presented by Ms. McClure. This one is, this is the agreement that the subcommittee, I believe it's the ART Committee, worked with, and so this agreement will, instead of KRCC constructing it, it will be Kitsap County. No, not quite. Okay. So I do have the contract for you to review and remember the discussion by Ms. McClure at the last meeting for your consideration.
Thank you. Mr. Childs?
I move to approve an inter-local agreement authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement among Kitsap County, the four Kitsap cities of Bremerton, Bainbridge Island, Port Orchard and Pauls Bow, and the port of Bremerton, to restructure the Kitsap Regional Coordinating Council, to provide a joint board for the purpose of collaborative decision-making with respect to land use, transportation, and other issues related to the countywide growth management. Maybe I'm just wasting my breath.
No. Is there a second?
I'll second for discussion.
Thank you.
So there's questions with this one, I think Mr. Whittleton testified, and one of the questions that he brought up that I think we all would want to know about is, how much? You know, how much does this cost? What, it's, this is the new deal, KRCC going under the umbrella of Kitsap County and, and the new fee structures for the cities and stuff. I think you have a pretty good handle on that.
I do. I would like to just give some informational data to the council and to the public. I will give a little history in that probably, it was in the late 2013, the Kitsap Regional Coordinating Council formed what they called an agency review team, the ART Committee, and they looked at any changes they may want to make within KRCC. At that time, and currently, KRCC is being administered by McClure Consulting. That particular contract was expiring in December of 2014, so it was a time, timely, it was appropriate, timely to review what KRCC would, how it would be structured going forward. As Mr. our council member Patonso chaired that committee, he came back to us and reported at almost every council meeting that they were looking, first of all, to the function of KRCC, to the form of KRCC, and then to the financing of KRCC. When they looked to the function, we identified that transportation and land use are the two primary elements that KRCC is responsible for and work directly with PSRC on. At the same time, the housing, KRCC took care of all of the housing, again, for these jurisdictions, the low-income housing. And KRCC has been involved over the years in some legislative issues and some other things. And during this, these conversations, the agreement coming out at the end of it was that KRCC did, KRCC needed to focus on transportation and land use, and that was why housing was moved to Kitsap County, because they could do it more effectively and more efficiently. At that time, there was the thought that KRCC would become its own entity, a, perhaps a nonprofit LLC or just a nonprofit. There are a variety of forms it could have taken. With that said, they put together a budget, which was very expensive, and they looked at altering a due structure, which included a surcharge, as I called it, a surcharge for access to PSRC transportation funding. There were some of us on KRCC that did a fairly significant pushback on that. We felt that those expenses were exceeding the appropriateness for our jurisdictions to fund. And so that kind of, that kind of interrupted the process. So the original budget numbers that we were looking at, that I even discussed from this diast at times, feeling that they were too expensive. So KRCC's executive board went back and said, how else could we realign ourselves? And so the decision was, was to become a joint board, and it will function much as the SENCOM board. So many people within all of the jurisdictions were very familiar with SENCOM and how that board worked, so that's how we were moving forward. With that particular, that is what has prompted the I, the changes in the inter-local agreement. The KRCC board is wanting to hire staff, hire an executive director and hire staff, and manage it that way rather than through a consultant. The other piece of that is, with the joint board, we will have an administrative agency, and all of the jurisdictions were asked if they wanted to be the administrative agency. The administrative agency will agency. The administrative agency will house the employees of KRCC. They will take care of the accounting for KRCC. They will provide legal support for KRCC. They will provide physical management for KRCC. And as such, I contacted, again, as our representative on KRCC, I contacted the city treasurer, Mr. Martin, and I said, are we interested in being the administrative agency? You know, these are what our responsibilities would be. And, and one of the limiting factors for Port Orchard was lack of space to house perhaps two and a half employees. And he just didn't feel that his department had the capacity to handle all of the rest of the things that the administrative agency will need to do. Two bids were, two submissions were received by KRCC to become the administrative agency, and that was the city of Palsbo and Kitsap County. So now what I'm addressing is the, what seems to be open-ended budget. The bid and a decision has not been made on who the administrative agency will be. The bid from Palsbo was $280,000. The bid from the county was, and these are round numbers, was $260,000. There will probably be some additional incidental expenses. I'm not sure what those would be. We haven't sat down and did a line item for those, but at KRCC meetings, sometimes there's coffee there, so somebody has to pay for that, you know? So I'm sure there's going to be some incidental expenses. I'm quite sure that an exaggerated number would be, that the budget would be 300,000. I don't think the budget will be that high. I think it will be less than that, but that's a number I'm comfortable saying might be realistic. With that, we have, right now, the city of Port Orchard pays approximately $7,000 a year for KRCC slash PSRC dues. The due structure is a fairly complicated, it's not that complicated, but I can't figure it out in my head. But it has to do with population and assessed value of property and things like that. If our, if we in fact had a KRCC budget in the range of $300,000, Port Orchard's share of that would be about $9,500 to $9,800. It would be less than we pay KETA and CATA right now. We, we offer the Kitsap Economic Development Alliance $10,000 a year and the Aerospace Defense Industry 2,000. So when you think about the return we get from PSRC and our access to federal transportation dollars, it's, it's kind of in line with what we pay for CATA. I don't think it will be beyond that. And it will eliminate that surcharge that we were talking about.
On grants.
On grants.
Right.
That was the key, that's a key piece to me. But I almost, I almost, or I have to tell our council that that budget has not been formalized, nor has the due structure been formalized. It is just an assumption that the due structure would not change from what we have been functioning under. And in, in, with the numbers, and I, and I like numbers, that to Port Orchard, it would be an increase, you know, in 25 to 2800 dollars a year. So another piece that I want to address is insurance. That was brought up by a constituent. And the insurance, I contacted Rob Gelder, our county commissioner, who happens to chair KRCC. And what he wrote back to me is, he said, "The, the budget is set by a separate agreement and action, therefore not part of this ILA. Insurance has been provided by the county for a long time as physical agent. Liability and defense will likely fall to the administrative agency once identified, as staff would be employees of that entity or contracted agency. If a claim were to occur and cause expense outside of what might be business as usual, I'm certain at that point the board would have a discussion about it. But whoever becomes our administering agency assumes those insurance issues." So that was a question that had been brought up. Another question that Mr. Whittleton brought up during pub, citizens' comments earlier was the voting structure. And the voting structure has not changed in this document from what we have functioned over, under since about the year 2000. It, there are three county commissioners that sit on KRCC. There is the mayor of the four cities. Depending upon your size, if you're over 10,000, you have an additional council member on KRCC. If you're over 30,000, you have two additional. Therefore, Bremerton has the mayor and two council members. Bainbridge Island and Port Orchard has the mayor, one council member. And Palsbo right now has their mayor only. They recently went over 10,000. However, they have to wait for that to be verified by OFM before they seat the additional member. We also have one member from the port of Bremerton. We have a member from the tribe. The tribe is a non-voting member. And we have a representative from Kitsap Transit as a non-voting member. However, the tribe and Kitsap Transit are both dues-paying. And we also have an ex officio member of the, oh God, what do you call the Navy Yard, Kitsap-based, Navy Base Kitsap, whatever it is. We, we have a member from them. When we vote for a motion to pass, it requires two county commissioners to vote for. It requires at least two of the small cities to vote in favor of it. Other than that, it's a regular majority, but the majority has to include two county commissioners and approval by two of the small cities. And the small cities are Bainbridge Island, Palsbo, and Port Orchard. Those, that voting has not changed in this document at all. People that looked at the ILA in a redlined version, there were red lines in that area, but it was simply to clarify and clean up the language. It did not change the intent of the language at all. And it's my understanding that that is why Bremerton voted against approving the ILA last week. I did talk to Palsbo, and they said, "This is just to confirm that the Palsbo City Council Wednesday night did without reservation approve the ILAs. We noted budget and other technical issues and parameters would be addressed in the bylaws themselves, which is a wholly separate step to the adoption of the ILAs." Those issues, including those cited by Port Orchard, because I had specifically asked him about their concern of dues and their concern of no budget. He said, "Our, reserved our city council in that regard." So I am open to other questions if anyone has and discussion to the council. But I wanted to give council some history on this document. And then I will also say that this document has been reviewed as to form by our interim city attorney. And the document has been reviewed in detail by our city treasurer, Allen Martin.
Thank you. We're answering questions before we add them, but.
Well, I, I think that, as you can see, this is, the voting is weighted away from Port Orchard somewhat. But it always has been.
Yeah, that did not change.
That hasn't changed, but that doesn't make us like it anymore. And now it's, we're looking at it because we're now approving another.
Correct.
Situation. But the housing of the KRCC likely is going to the county. And that ends, to me, that's, in some ways makes sense, that the county has their three commissioners on it because they're, maybe not before, now, but now, they're, have a big stake in the fact that they're housing this whole thing and providing the staff and the support and insurance, as you've mentioned. So I don't have a problem with that, actually, at this point. I guess the hard thing to, to say to the public right now is that we may move ahead without knowing the final, final numbers. And, and who is going to vote on those numbers? Who's going to vote to put that together? This voting sequence is how that's going to happen, or?
Mr. Charles, I'll be real honest about that, and I'm, I'm not exactly sure. I know that the budget will be developed within the executive committee. I think that's what it's called.
Any of us on?
Or, I am.
You are?
I am. I'm on the small committee of five. And we will put the budget together. We will bring it forward to the entire KRCC board, which is all of the juris, the larger body, and that will be improved. I do not know if we bring that back to our individual councils for ratification. That's the piece I, I don't know, because I was not involved with it the year before.
This ILA says no. It says that's going to be in the bylaws and that's yet to be done by the executive committee.
Right.
I would say that, from my two cents, we know what we currently pay, and we know what we currently pay by councilmatic action of approval of the budget every year. What has been the discussion constantly for almost a year now is the 2% fee on the grant. And the question that I, we had, and I think I had at the time, was do we have to pay that upfront, or do we pay that when we receive it? And the answer, I believe we heard from staff, was that we would just have to put that money aside, knowing that if we awarded the grant, we'd have to pay for it and then resupply the general fund when the grant came in. Is that correct? Did I kind of?
You said they removed that stipulation, right?
Right. That's what we're working towards, is to remove that stipulation. And to answer your other question on that, Mr. Cartwright, is originally, the ART committee thought that the surcharge could be part of our transportation funding. And in fact, PSRC said, no, that is not the case. It, it's a direct expense to us. So we would want to think in terms of rather having a 13 and a half percent match, we would have a 15 percent match. That was where we got the.
Right.
We need to do this differently. Yeah.
And that's, so that's not been decided?
That, it, it has not been decided. There has not been a vote. The assumption that I am under as being on the smaller committee as well as the larger group is that the due structure will not change from what we are paying right now.
So Beck, on the executive committee, there's five of you, and you're one.
Mm-hmm.
I know that maybe there's some confidences that you're dealing with, but do you have any kind of feeling how they're, how the rest of the members of the executive committee are feeling about this budget and the issue you just mentioned of the percentage of the grant amount? And you think there's some like-mindedness to yourself, or?
I, I believe so. The other thing I'm going to say is, I am the only member of this committee that was not part of the ART committee. So I'm, I'm bringing a fresh look to it as, as I get into it. We have, when they made their presentation to the entire KRCC, and we found out that we could not use PSRC fun, funds, you could see the looks change. And you could also see some of us on the committee that have a financial background saying, this budget is way too much. And we have to put a limit on the budget, and KRCC has to figure out how to work within that budget. It, it can't be open-ended, you know? And so the other thing for the audience and for the council, KRCC is a personnel business. It's, you know, you're not going to find a lot of overhead in other areas. It's personnel. That's, that's where you're, that's where the bulk of this is. What are you going to pay your executive director? And then what are you going to pay the staff underneath that? The executive director position is absolutely, I'm talking too much.
Yes.
But it's, but it's absolutely critical to the success of KRCC. And this person needs the skill to deal with Mark and Mark's Transportation Technical Group. They need the skills to deal with Nick and Nick's Land Use Group. They need the skills to negotiate with PSRC on behalf of all of our jurisdictions. And they have to work with all the electives, you know? So it's a, it's a, it's a big responsibility.
I'm comfortable with the broad outlines that you presented. Thank you. There is one little detail that I'm still a little uncomfortable about. It's on page six. It's item six, financing, cost allocation. And it's saying basically, "All members shall pay the annual cost allocation as described in the bylaws."
Correct.
So we're approving this. It's referring to bylaws, and the bylaws are not in front of us.
Or even completed.
So, but you did say that the bylaws would be ratified at another time. But I don't see that in this, that the bylaws would be ratified at another time.
I'll buy this.
Well, the bylaws are not changing.
Okay, okay.
The bylaws are not changing.
Okay. Then, then I'm comfortable with that. But in general, I'd say that my concern is to echo the cost allocation, basically how the cities are paying in the proposed, we saw something from, you know, Commissioner Gelder, that basically the county's portion went down and some of the cities went up and some remained the same. So that was the cost allocation concern that I had. It certainly made sense for the county, but not all the cities. Transit, for example, would be the first to pay a certain amount of dues. And so it sounds like that's not going to, that's, we're not ratifying that change at this time.
That is correct.
Okay.
That is correct.
Beck, I think I'm, I'm relieved to hear that there's no surcharge. But I don't feel comfortable approving this without having the budget. And I don't see the need of approving this now until there is a budget. So why not wait? I don't think we should vote on something where we have a big piece of it missing. It could change. I understand how you're feeling and how you're going to vote, but you're just one of five. So I'm, I'm going to vote against this because I want to have more information when I make that decision. But I really do appreciate eliminating the surcharge, because I was extremely concerned about that.
Well, can we table the vote or move it forward until such time as the budget is ready? Rather than voting it down, move it forward till the budget's ready and then bring it forward again?
How soon would the budget be ready?
I, you know, I'm assuming sometime in April, but I am not positive of that. We have to select the administrative agent first and, you know, and do some of those things.
When is the next meeting that you, you will be at that will possibly reveal some more information?
I will be at a meeting, St. Patrick's Day. I will be at a meeting prior to our work-study session. That is our executive, that's our five-committee meeting. And then our next KRCC meeting will be April 14th.
So I'm not sure of the proper vehicle, but is the rest of the council comfortable with just moving this forward for, till, say, the first meeting in April and then taking up the discussion again?
I would be. I know that there's some concerns. And I don't, I don't dismiss those lightly. I, I would be comfortable, actually, either way with either funding. But because we were told this was the direction of the funding, and now this might be the direction of the funding, I think I, I think I'd feel more comfortable seeing something a little bit more solid. So I would be okay moving forward, moving it forward.
Can we continue? How do we continue the action?
You can just make a motion to move this agenda item to a date certain.
Say, I move this item to XY meeting and build on it, and that's the end.
Don't we already have a motion on the floor?
Yes, but you need another motion. Once you make a motion to move it to a date certain, you vote, you make that motion, and then the motion that you have on the floor now carries forward to that date certain.
Do I move to move this discussion forward to the first meeting in April?
Second.
And I will just make a comment to that, in that I would be supportive and appreciative of. of moving it forward, continuing it, rather than declining it or having a negative vote.
Yeah, well, that's what I just did. Right. That's what I thought, too.
Correct.
Right.
Okay. So, we will be voting on continuing the discussion—the Business Item 7D to our first meeting in April, which will be, I believe, April 14th.
Yes. The same day as your meeting.
The same day as our meeting.
So, that's perfect.
That is. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. We will move on to Business Item E, Adoption of a Resolution Approving the Source Contract with Social Momentum LLC for the Mind Mixer Platform. Mr. Bond.
Yes, thank you. The Public Properties and Economic Development Committees have been discussing the need to conduct public outreach on a number of issues facing the city, including but not limited to the Comprehensive Plan Update, Parks Planning, and Economic Development. In January, the committee participated in a conference call with Social Momentum LLC regarding their Mind Mixer Platform. After consideration, the Public Properties Committee recommended that a contract for that software be brought forward before the City Council for consideration. Mind Mixer is a unique service that facilitates communication between the city and the public. It can be the source of ideas, feedback, and is a way to measure our success. It is employed by more than 700 communities in the U.S. and represents a 21st-century approach to community engagement. In the packet, I included links so that you could watch presentations on how the software works, and also shared some examples of its use. And since this is a unique product, the contract would be awarded as a sole-source contract in accordance with RCW 3904280, and the recommendation is to approve the contract for the Mind Mixer Platform.
I move to adopt resolution—I move to adopt the Resolution Approving the Sole-Source Contract with Social Momentum for the Mind Mixer Platform.
Second.
And so, I did want to follow up on the comment that we heard from the public earlier. Nick, were you able to look at any other similar products?
Yeah, we did some research on this, and initially, the recommendation for this type of platform came out of the work that the university students did with the Comprehensive Plan Update. I know the school district is looking at a similar software for school applications, and that one is designed and geared towards school use. There was another one that we looked at that said that it did municipal work, but it really seemed to be targeted towards corporate clients in its marketing and in the applications that we looked at. The software that was mentioned in the comment period of this meeting is geared towards city planning, but it's a survey-based software, and it's not a crowdsourcing-based platform where people can create ideas that are more open-ended, and those ideas sort of float to the top. It's—the Mind Mixer Platform does allow for surveys, but it's also allows for discussion and crowdsourcing, sharing ideas through social networks. And also, it provides the city with the ability to actually reach out through social networks to connect to people that have commented on past ideas, and so, it's a way to maintain communication between interested citizens and the city. It also provides a link to elected officials from those citizens, so that they know who to talk to when they have an idea or want to be heard, and it's just a good way to facilitate communication.
Thank you.
Mr. Chang?
I appreciated the comments, because they echoed one of—we actually had a really good presentation—it was over the phone—where we had a walkthrough of the software. And one of the things that we were concerned about was the signup. You know, do you have another password to remember? Do you have your email, your name, your address? And yes, we wondered about that, because it has demographic information. But what we found, if I remember correctly, was that we're asking for very basic information, I think gender, email. I actually wanted more information, because I wanted to know if somebody lived in the city limits or outside the city limits. And the current way you sign up is just by zip code, which, as we know, goes all over nuts. But this is something they said they might be able to work on, possibly doing precincts. They weren't going to change their initial signup, though. It would be just additional information, because I remember thinking, you know, if people have to do all—the go through, like, a whole list of things to sign up, it would be very discouraging. But we—we had a good feel for the software, or I had a good feel for the software, because they've been used by other local municipalities. I think King County Public Utility District might be one of them. They are also based in the U.S. The other company mentioned, MetroQuest, I think is based in Canada. That might be close to us here, but it's still another country. And this software—it had a nice feel about it. It could do reports, because we were concerned about making it friendly to more—to more people, to the public in general. So, I actually feel pretty comfortable with this platform and with the software.
Mr. Charles?
Well, I certainly appreciate all the work that's gone into this, and especially by the Public Property Committee and the Economic Development Committee, everybody that's taken a look at it. I personally have a problem with spending this money at this point, and the staff time that it takes to monitor this type of a program. I've been looking at the fiscal impact, and it appears to say 2,500 annually, and I look over here under page three on the back, and it talks about total fee 12,500 by the fifth year. I guess that's the 2,500 each year, although the first year it says five, then it says eight. I don't know what that all means. I actually don't care, because I just feel like it's—I mean, we have so many things that we've got to buy, and this—this feels like, wouldn't it be great to have this? Because we—of all the things you're saying, and yet, I'm saying, well, yeah, there's—wouldn't it be great to have lots of things? But I don't feel like we are in a position right now, looking at all the costs and expenses coming down the pike, to be doing this, at least not for me. I'm maybe a little more frugal than the rest of you, but that's how I feel about it. So, I'm going to be voting no.
Well, maybe I could address a little bit of that. We—we've been talking at length about getting input from the public, both in terms of outreach for comp plan and for park usage. And the mayor has repeatedly said, at least in the last year, staff time is very limited. And we view this as a way to gather, which I consider to be very important, feedback from the citizens at a very reasonable fee. $2,500 a year for this tool, I think, is very reasonable, and it should accomplish what it is we're hoping to gather from the public. So, I'm very strongly in support of this, because I just don't think Nick and his staff have the time to do what we're asking them to do. I think $2,500 is fairly reasonable for what we're getting out of this, and we did get the break for a five-year term, where we can opt out after the first year if it's not working. So, for a $2,500 gamble, I think in the first year, we should be able to get at least the information we're looking to get for this year. And if it doesn't work out, it's $2,500 to conduct a number of surveys and get feedback from the city on where they want this city to go in the future in terms of comp plan and park, economic development, and all host of other surveys that we could use. And I think engaging the public and feedback for 2,500 bucks for the next year is quite reasonable.
Mr. Chang?
I would only add that the presentation what also impressed me was that it sort of expands our technology. Currently, we have no way to get smartphone input. Well, I don't think we have any way to get smartphone input with our current website, but this would enable people to access and participate with their smartphones, and I think it's—I think it's a good deal. I also like the way that the—all the UW students that were here earlier had used it in some other program, and it was one of the first things they mentioned, and I remember thinking I'd never heard of it. But it looks very useful.
Ms. Lucrelli, did you have anything?
Well, it takes a while for the public to actually become acquainted with a new tool, and I consider this a new tool. So, I'm not so sure that feedback that we would get in this first—the remaining of this year would be all that representative of the whole community. So, I'm not sure at what point we'd feel secure about getting a fair representation from this. And it wouldn't be in time for the Comprehensive Plan, for instance, and that's mainly what you're looking at the usage for, isn't it?
Park—park survey as well, economic development as well.
Well, I think it's going to take a while for this to launch, and then I'm also thinking, does this exclude anyone? Now, I know that there are some elderly that really are not—I'm not—I don't want to go across the board—that may not be savvy with social media, and I'm just feeling a little uneasy about it, about the results, how they'll be used, and if this will actually be a good cross-section of our—the public here in Port Orchard. I don't know where it's been successful. Has it been larger cities? Do we have any information about that?
I'm remembering a lot of Midwestern cities. Is that accurate or not accurate?
There are a handful of cities in Washington as well that have used it that are big and small. Snohomish—the city of Snohomish has used it, and then Tacoma, Seattle have used it, Sea-Tac, Bury, and I think—and some others. But what I was going to say to address a couple of the comments that I heard was that the—first of all, as far as staff resources, my—the associate planner that we hired has experience as an admin on this platform and used it at the jurisdiction where she worked previously, so we have somebody who's experienced in putting this together, and I feel confident in their ability to make this as simple as possible for us to roll out. And as far as the comment about excluding or including people, I think the whole purpose of the software is to include the people that are too busy to actually come to a meeting because they have families and jobs, and so, really, it's—it's available to everybody in the public, but it really is trying to reach the people who have busy lives and who tend to be plugged in, and so, we'd be hearing from people that maybe we don't get to hear from as frequently.
And again, just—it was—it was brought forward primarily out of Public Properties initially for park information, because part of the—to work on the park comprehensive—element of the Comprehensive Plan, we need to get public input, and understanding the limited resources that staff has to execute meetings and gather information, this seemed like a reasonable alternative, or at least one tool that can be used to gather as much information as possible.
Which is something you need this year. I just don't think it's in time, so.
Are there more comments?
I wanted to actually address something that Councilman Lucrelli brought up, which is, I think with any technology, we're always concerned about who is it reaching? Is it reaching half the population? Is it reaching a certain segment of the population in terms of age? They had a bell curve here, and I thought, well, that's nice, but how does that affect our Port Orchard population? And I don't know that we have an answer for that, because we don't know what percentage of the population has web access, for example, maybe half, and we don't know the age range. But part of—I look at this as getting more information than we would have normally, but I think we also need to do other outreach. I don't—it doesn't have a telephone component that people could call in, but we could also make paper versions available for people who didn't have the technology to access it.
We will go ahead and vote on the motion, which is to adopt the Resolution Approving the Sole-Source Contract with Social Mentium for the Mind Mixer Platform. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no.
No.
With the number of council people that we have here today, we need four voting in—no?
That's for an ordinance.
Oh, just for an ordinance?
That's for an ordinance, but for resolution, you're okay, the majority of—
Okay. And we will go on to Business Item F, which is Approval of Our Work-Study Session Minutes.
Move to approve the minutes.
Did you make the motion, Jerry?
Yeah.
Okay. I second that.
Is there any discussion on the work-study minutes? All those in favor of approving the work-study minutes of February 17th as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yeah, I would abstain. I was not present.
Thank you. And 7G is Approval of Our Regular Meeting Minutes of February 24th.
I move approval of the February 24th meeting minutes.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving the regular council meeting minutes of February 24th, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I will abstain. I was not present.
Thank you. And we will move on to Business Item 7H, Approval of the Public Event Application for the Port Orchard Farmers Market. Brandy.
All right. So, Laura Pittman Hewitt with the Kitsap Regional Farmers Market Association is requesting the use of city parking lots and right-of-ways. In addition, they are requesting permission to place a small locked shed or pod in one of the parking spaces 365 days a year to store market equipment, such as canopies, tables, and event supplies on site. Spaces 24, 25, or 1 seem to be the most out of the way and appropriate for this purpose. The Port Orchard Farmers Market is scheduled for every Saturday beginning April 4th and continuing until October 10th, 2015, as well as one Sunday, which is May 24th. The market is open to the public from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. and is an outdoor farmers' market where local farmers, artists, and food vendors sell their product. This is not a new event. They have been granted permission to host their event in the past several years. However, staff is looking for direction from the council to see if they will allow them to use a parking stall to house a pod 365 days a year. The fiscal impact—which you guys have been provided an updated staff report noted that a parking stall downtown in that area is $90 per month, or $5 a day, depending on which one they want to do. And historically, for the amount of space that we have leased to vendors, is $10 per month. However, it typically has not been a revenue-generated spot, so that's the fiscal impact. I have provided two motions for you for consideration. And I have an updated—a better map that might give you a visual of where space 24, 25, and 1 are. So, here is Bay Street, Harrison—oops, there's my—so, we're look—they're looking at these two spots here, or that one.
Mr. Chang?
I'd like to make the motion. I move to approve the public event application from the Kitsap Regional Farmers Market, but deny the request to place a small pod in the city's parking space.
Second.
And in speaking in favor of this motion, we love the farmers' market. We did not feel it was a good use of a parking space to let them park a shed there or a pod. It didn't make any sense financially, and we felt that there may be other locations they could use.
I agree, and I also know, having worked events down at the waterfront, that that could also be in the way of other events, depending on how they make use of their spot. So, it didn't make sense to me either.
We also discussed at Public Property the fact that parking is extremely limited down there, Monday through Friday, to 5:00, as one issue. And then, the potential issue, if we lease to them a pod, who else is going to want to lease a pod and a stall as well? So, as Fred said, we wholeheartedly support the farmers' market, but we just couldn't go there with the pod on a parking stall.
Yes, kind of thinking that they could just move it over next to the bank there, and maybe cut a little swath in there and put a little pod up out of the parking lot, but in a space along that bank that isn't being used for anything else anyway. And I would concur with what Cindy has said, that I can remember when the Rotary did the Rock Around the Block down there, that that whole space had a band, and if you just had this shed or pod sitting in the middle of this area where they're going to have people and stuff. In fact, Cedar Cove Days had the same setup as the Rotary did. So, yeah, I mean, it just doesn't make any sense.
And there's always the issue of liability, damage, vandalism.
I think we're ready to vote. We will vote on the motion to approve the public event application for the Kitsap Regional Farmers Market, but deny the request to place a small pod in the city's parking— Farmers Market, but deny the request to place a small pod in the city's parking space. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And we will move on to seven I, approval of the public event application for Hogfest. Brandy?
Okay, so Clancy Donlin with the Port Orchard Bay Street Association is requesting use of city parking lots and right-of-ways for Sunday, September 20th, 2015, with the setup beginning on Saturday, September 19th after 4:00 p.m. This is the first Hogfest event, and it is a pork festival, National Barbecue Association sanctioned barbecue cook-off. This will benefit the city by drawing people from the entire Northwest region to the area. The event will begin at 8:00 a.m. with approximately 2,500 visitors and 15 exhibitors. The City Department, the Fire Department, and Kitsap Transit has reviewed the application submitted and has provided the recommendations or comments to the council. And then also, I did, since Mr. Donlin is not a board member of the P O B S A, staff has sought approval by the president of the P O B S A, and she approves the application as submitted.
Counsel?
I move to approve the public event application from the Port Orchard Bay Street Association and allow them to hold their event using the city parking lots and right-of-ways. For the sake of discussion.
Is there a second?
I'll, I'll second that.
It will be open for discussion?
I have a question. Brandy, I see here in the summary that they want to start setting up on Saturday evening. And then there's some questions in here via email about what happens if there's cars parked overnight. And if we mark those appropriately, they can be towed on Sunday morning if they're still there, which I'm fine with. But the setup on Saturday night, I didn't see where that was referenced from Kitsap Transit, that they understood starting at 4:00 Saturday evening, there was going to be a setup. And would that impact transit or any other businesses in the area? Because I know transit still operates past 4:00 p.m. on Saturday.
I can confirm that, but they were provided the application. And as far as I understand, yeah.
See them in the application.
Oh.
Did I miss that?
It's at the back, but he doesn't reference Saturday.
There's that email from Doug Johnson, but he's only referring to Sunday. He doesn't mention Saturday.
We're not doing a shuttle, and it's only on Sunday. I didn't, but in the summary, it says they wanted to set up at Saturday, starting at 4:00. So that was my question, if everybody that reviewed this understood that the organizer intended to start 4:00 p.m. Saturday to set up.
I would assume so, but I can confirm that with all the departments and also confirm with Kitsap Transit.
And I don't have a problem with a 4:00 p.m. setup if it's not going to interfere with anybody else, whether it's a business, transit, parking, whatever.
Another question I had is, it's called a Hogfest, and it refers to barbecue. But we were talking about this earlier. It talks about motorcycles being parked on the map. If you look at the party graph, the Harleys, and it refers to hogs, are being parked in the parking area left of the library. So I am wondering, is this an actual motorcycle event?
Mr. Donlin is in the audience. Does anyone mind if he comes to the podium and answers questions?
We have a lot of questions.
Hobble on up, Mr. Donlin.
Did you do that on a motorcycle?
I like to tell people I was doing it skydiving, but Karen, my girlfriend, will quickly tell them I did it falling out of bed in the middle of the night. The reference, the reason we're putting motorcycles, or we're going to try to have a motorcycle exhibit, is that there's a reference to Harleys as being hogs. So it was just one more event we were going to add to it, just a, it's just a show event. It's not anything more than that. People who want to exhibit their bikes can park them there.
It's not Sturgis Northwest, right?
Not yet.
So you're going to be advertising to bikers to come to this event and?
Clubs. We're going to be contacting clubs.
Their bikes?
Yeah.
Now, would they be coming into town on Saturday night? Would there be large numbers of motorcycles?
No, the reason for the, the Saturday night, the early start, is that some of the, the items, the meets that the, the teams have to barbecue, they need that lead time. So they'll start, they'll just get, they'll park and then get set up. But by being set up doesn't mean that they're going to take over the whole area. There's just maybe half of the vendors that we're going to have will come in that early. But pork butt and brisket take that extra time. And so we couldn't really do it in a one-day event and have, have those items in the competition. They're pretty key. If anyone watches barbecue shows on TV, they're, those are two of the key items that they use in competition.
Mr. Chang?
I like the idea of motorcycles and maybe a kind of a show with motorcycles. I love our cruise and our car events, Mustangs on the waterfront. I love all that stuff. But I've filled out these event apps before myself and with others, and it takes a long time to fill them out. And it doesn't feel like you took a long time in filling this out. No offense, but just, just saying that there's a, there's a lot of questions that should have a little more in-depth answers. For exam, and the, something that Councilwoman Lucarelli mentioned about the hogs and on the map, and in your description of the event, pork festival, all things pork, national barbecue, barbecue cook-off, purses, benefits city by, you know, what, benefits the city, let's just leave it at that. But nothing about a display of motorcycles. So what I'm trying to say is, and again, I'm not against the vent, but I, but number two, you say you don't need any police officers, but you don't describe really how you're going to provide for public safety, traffic, and crowd control. There's, those issues are still alive. Just because you don't have police officers doesn't mean you don't have to deal with those issues. But you haven't answered that. So I feel like the application is incomplete. And if you go over, I mean, I don't want to keep going on, it's stupid. But I love the idea, but I think that, you know, we should delay this and, and have you take this back and give us a complete application with the, all the questions answered as best you can.
Well, you do understand it's the first year, and some of this is a guesswork.
Yeah, but that doesn't mean you don't have to answer the questions. That's all I'm saying.
Sure.
Yeah, I've, I've done a first-year event, too. And believe me, it took a long time to fill this application up. I mean, we agonized over these questions. And I'm just, with that in my background, I feel like we deserve a little more thorough description of each thing, because we're going to be voting on this, which means we are endorsing it, endorsing every aspect of it. So I don't know what the rest of the council wants to do. I just feel like it's not complete.
Mr. Chang?
Could you explain to me the map that we're, we're showing up there, what, what the pink and what the yellow mean?
Well, those are, pink is fire lanes. We just marked out the fire lanes.
So you're not blocking off traffic with the pink lanes?
No.
Okay. So the areas that you're using are basically the yellow?
Correct.
Okay, so you're using the yellow to the west and to the east? Okay. So the access is okay, it's just the, okay, thank you.
We just use that so that we wouldn't do anything that blocked a fire lane.
Okay.
Another thing I just, I'm curious about, too, is you said you were maybe hoping for about 2,500 people, and that you would use the restrooms that were already down, down at the waterfront. I know when we have Jingle Bell Run, we have about that many, or just a little fewer, and they bring in quite a few porta-potties. Do you have any plans to do that kind of thing?
Uh, we do not at this time. Doesn't mean we wouldn't, we wouldn't do it. We just haven't researched that. We've only had two committee meetings. We've had some pre-planning meetings so that we contacted the barbecue association, and we didn't waste anybody's time in a committee meeting. We did a lot of research ahead of time, but.
I think that would need to be part of the planning. As I know, it's very important to have the porta-potties, and we're not exactly sure about our own public restroom down there.
Well, the only restroom that, so the Port of Bermerton actually opens and shuts all the restrooms. In my understanding, they're not open on Sundays. So you've got the one over by the pavilion, which is closed on Sundays unless they assign somebody to open that restroom. And then there's the one at the marina, and then the one at the boat launch. So you'd need to confirm with them that time of year if they're opening it or not. We don't control the restrooms. And then, of course, you know, the other issue that I had in my email was just parking, or the police chief and I deal a lot with people that go to Seattle on a Saturday night, and they come back paying, having paid for the space, and they come in, their car's gone. So I want to just make sure that you guys are going to be responsible to, you or the port are going to be putting up all the signage, and you'll be towing the people and dealing with the people being towed. Because people will get towed. There were people that either work in the shipyard, or they're going to Seattle, and their car's going to be there, they're going to not see the sign. Because every event we've had like this, we've always towed cars. The police chief and I get the brunt of dealing with those phone calls, so.
Mr. Cartwright?
I'd like to make a motion to forward this to April 28th, and that will give an opportunity to have public property review at April 13th. And with that motion, I'd also ask that Brandy keep September 20th open, since I think he's the first one in line. And I invite Mr. Donlin, is it?
Yes.
If possible, to attend the public property meeting, April 13th, here at 8:30 in the morning.
Sure.
And that'll give us some time, maybe to, to work through some more of these questions. Because that was a long motion, I apologize.
Is there a second for that?
A second, yeah.
Question on that?
Sounds good to me.
That makes a lot of sense.
Okay, so we will be voting on the motion to continue.
April 28th.
To April 28th, this, the public event application for the Hogfest. And with the request that it be brought to public properties on April 13th. All those in favors, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
We will move on to reports of council committees. And we will start with finance. Mr. Childs?
Finance is on the 27th. I don't have a report, but the next meeting's on the 27th at the Pancake House. 7:30.
Thank you. And I'm Economic Development and Tourism. And we had a meeting yesterday. Our first agenda item, we talked about the KRCC's population and employment allocations. We reviewed actual and his, actual historic data to the allocation that we've been given to 2015, 2035, and we've moved that now to work-study. We discussed the content and creation of a public event toolkit funded through LTAC. And our goal is to have a personal service contract available in May so that we can move forward getting our public event toolkit prepared. We also discussed the summer foot fairy service and marketing needs for that service. And that, too, has been moved to the work-study. And then Nick provided us updates on our critical areas ordinance, which is the best available science contract for our comp plan. We talked about the mine mixer contract, and we got an update on the wayfinding system. That was our economic development meeting. We will move on to the utility committee, Ms. Lucarelli.
The next utility meeting is this coming Friday at 7:30 at the Pancake House.
Thank you. And Ms., did anyone go to the sewer advisory committee?
I did.
Could you report on that also?
I'm not prepared to report on that tonight.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Cartwright, Public Properties?
Yes, we met at March 9th at 8:30 here. The first thing was not on the agenda, but we had a report from Ryan Lund from the P W E S regarding the active club water issues. And he's made some great strides working with his board and, and parents. And they actually have somebody that used to do drainage work as a living. So expect some real good volunteer work on getting that active club in shape. And I don't think we're going to have to pay the 60 grand. We had a discussion on Slaughter County Coffee Stand. That was the one that wanted to be in the industrial area. They want to move their location. But in that application to move was a request to basically move, I guess, about 30 yards of dirt and gravel in another area to make a drive-through lane. We're going to forward that to the work-study session on the 24th. There was an email that brought forward regarding smoking in front of the active club. We basically said that's not a public property issue, it's a policing issue. I believe Public Works is going to look to get a butt kit and move it down to the gazebo area away from the front door. We had a request for a no parking sign at the end of Tremont Place. And we approved going ahead and posting no parking there. It's a dead-end street, and people are using it as a parking for sale vehicle thing. We talked about the Van Zee Park sign. Now that we have a lease with South Kitsap Soccer, that sign needs to be fixed, and that'll be done. And we talked, excuse me for the crunching of the microphone. 125th anniversary is coming up, so look for some more information on that. Farmers Market Pod, we had already heard about. And the mayor forwarded an idea for a park committee, but we think that at this time it's premature until we get some information back on the survey. Our next meeting will be April 13th.
Thank you. Fred, is there anything on the LTAC?
No, nothing to report.
Okay. And Ms. Lucarelli chimes in, lights?
No, thank you.
And I'm assuming the waterfront, it continues to be on hold, the waterfront plan?
The waterfront is on hold.
The waterfront is on hold, okay. We have outside agency reports, and I did attend the KRCC meeting on March 3rd. And you heard earlier a lengthy discussion of what was talked about at that meeting, and so we won't say anything else. And I will be attending this Thursday, the PSRC Transpall meeting, the regular meeting. And then I'm also attending their project selection task force for the next cycle of federal funding. So those are my two reports. Do we have an outside agency report for KITA?
Yeah, the Kitsap Economic Development Alliance is having their annual meeting and luncheon, March 19th. I know that the council's probably received an invite if, I don't know who all's going, but I'll be there and look forward to seeing you there. And, yeah, that's about it.
Are there any other outside agencies? Did you go to the growth management at PSRC? No? Anything else? No? Then we will move forward. The mayor is not here, so he will not have a report this evening. And we will go to reports by the department head, Mr. Darcy?
Yeah, I just let you know that I received what I felt was a really good email this week, basically saying that it looks like, without jinxing, that we have the Bay Street pedestrian pathway bridge, that we've found the solution between the Wash Dot design documentation, Fish and Wildlife approving the bridge, and then being within our budget, at least where we think. So that was really good news, because we've been really struggling to balance that three-legged chair. Now, that doesn't mean I won't be coming back to this body in a month or so saying, you know, we need $50,000 more or something, but I don't know.
But Mark?
Well, I'm just saying, it was a lot of work to get, to find what Wash Dot would approve, what Fish and Wildlife would approve from the shading issue, what Wash Dot would reduce to from the 14-foot, you know, down to the 10 and a half foot. And then obviously what fit within the budget that we had estimated a few years ago. So I, I was really pleased to see that we, at least it looks like we're there. And if we have to throw a few, throw a few more dollars into it, it'll be well worth it. But I don't know that yet. I just know that it looked like Fish and Wildlife was supportive of our reduction from 14 to 10 and a half, that the 10 and a half works within our budget, and that the DOT will accept the 10 and a half, as long as there's a 10-foot clear, 10 and a half-foot clear on the pedestrian pathway. So I was very pleased, so. And as soon as Bay Ford does their voluntary cleanup, we'll be riding behind them mid-June, end of June, to start doing the piling. And I'm assuming that once we get the contract, we'll start fabricating the bridge off-site, and it should go fairly quickly, so. we'll start fabricating the bridge offsite, and it should go fairly quickly, so.
Thank you. Mr. Bond?
Yeah, I've got two announcements. You all should have received an email that we have scheduled the Joint Planning Commission and City Council meeting for April 15th at 7:00 p.m. That'll be the presentation, and then eight days later, we'll have a roundtable discussion between the Planning Commission and Council about the draft comprehensive plan, also at 7:00 p.m. So I would encourage members of the public, especially to attend the presentation, to get some valuable information about the plan as it's been drafted, and also the process up to this point, and sort of where we're at in the process. And then the, like I said, the second meeting is more of a constructive question, you know, question and answer and discussion among the group, so that Planning Commission has some clear direction from the council, and so that council also has an opportunity to hear directly the Planning Commission concerns about plan elements. Finally, as Councilmember Cartwright mentioned, we did, or it might have been Councilmember Ashby, I can't remember, the Wayfinding signs, we did get the final deliverables on that, as well as the logo. They have asked me to provide any revisions, and there's about six things I'm asking them to fix, just in terms of text and type, but I should have final documents out publicly available for viewing, and I'll send them to all the council members as soon as I have that information totally complete. But anyway, I think it turned out fairly well, and we have some good bid-ready documents, and we're going to need to work at the Public Properties Committee on policies for the use of the logo, or the, I guess, the Economic Development Committee, or one of the other committees. So that's my report.
How are you going to get, I know that that's a really large file. Can you reduce it so that we can receive it by email, or is it be hard copy?
I'm going to upload it to the website, so that you can download it, because it is about a 40-meg file, I think, for each of those, and I think your work, your Port Orchard email accounts can actually do up to 40-megs, so I'll see if it'll fit or not. But either way, it'll be on the website for viewing, and then it's possible to compress it into a smaller file, but then you lose the layering, and it's not suitable then for use as a graphic element at that point.
Right, thank you. Ms. Morris? Ms. Reinerson?
Yeah, I have a couple of things. So I know you all are going to get home tonight and ask us questions, so I'm going to save you the emails and the phone calls. So my department did ask the Nick, the Nick, the DCD Department about the Mine Mixer and public disclosure, and how that's going to be handled, and because there is communication with the public, it's my understanding that there is, within that software, it will maintain all of the dialogue between the public and staff and elected officials. So should there be a public disclosure, it will be easily accessible at our fingertips. And if you want the recommendation of the staff that handles public disclosure, I would prefer that we use the Mine Mix Media Platform to communicate with our volunteers, because when elected officials and staff communicate via email with volunteers, it can become problematic. So, that's food for thought. And then the other thing is the 125th Committee Anniversary Meeting, we had that, all my days are confused, but I think that was last week, and so they're underway. The way that it's being presented or worked out is that local service groups will be presenting their own fundraiser. So for example, the Saints Car Club is going to be doing a marble tournament. The Sydney Arts Museum has already published and will be adding this to the event of, it's a cards of decks that has historic pictures, images throughout the city of Port Orchard that's on their decks. There's been talk about a service club providing breakfast in the morning from about 8:00 to 10:00, and then there's been some conversation of maybe the starting of the event would be in front of City Hall, with the possibility of closing Prospect Street from Kitsap to Robert Geiger, so just that little, so we can have everybody attend, and they're hoping that maybe 1,000 or 2,000 people will be attending. We're optimistic, right? And then the invitations to all the dignitaries within Kitsap County, and hopefully the president and the governor, those invitations will be sent out, I believe, by next week. So September 5th is the date, and the next committee meeting is March 23rd, here at City Hall at 5:30. That's all I have.
Thank you. And we are open again for citizens' comments, if anyone would like to address the council. Mr. Whittleton?
I would just like to remind the council that when I go to work once a month, I always get to be the answer guy for the breakfast clubs. Pancake House is not a professional establishment for a meeting, and it's not representative of the city of Port Orchard. Thank you.
Ms. Harmon?
I was thinking about the Mine Mixer Platform, and one of the things that I have noticed on surveys that I've been receiving on the internet, is that a lot of them come where you cannot have a public response on the survey part, and they are so written so that the outcome will be exactly what the survey company wants. And so I would like to see that if you do take surveys, that there's an opportunity for somebody who doesn't agree with whatever is coming forth, to have a platform to make comments, because so many of the surveys coming out now will only have one end, and that's the end that whoever developed the survey wants. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to address council? Sing none, we will stand adjourned.